Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yannis?
Here.
And Mrs. Yerko?
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by providing an update on the vaccine centers. The senior center has given 689 vaccinations this week, and Lakeside has given just over 1,800, for a total of 25, just over 2,500 vaccinations. That's over the past week. To date, the city has administered over 5,500 vaccines, and we estimate that over 30,000 Sterling Heights residents now have been vaccinated at either between our centers and other centers available throughout the county. I'm really pleased to announce on Monday, April 26th, the National Guard will be vaccinating veterans from the Lakeside Vaccination Center. They expect to vaccinate 400 veterans and their family members. So we're really honored to play a role in protecting veterans throughout the area, including Sterling Heights. Starting May 26th, the Sears Drive-Thru Vaccination Center will remain open until 8:00 p.m. on Wednesdays, that's every Wednesday, until June 30th, and may be extended beyond that. But for now, for that month period of time, on Wednesdays until 8:00 p.m. So, so far, so good with the two Sterling Heights vaccination centers. Like the mayor and city council, I also want to commend the Sterling Heights firefighters and paramedics who have really just done an outstanding job administering vaccines at the two centers, and also the many other volunteers that are involved in each of the centers. To say this is a great example of teamwork is an understatement, so thank you to everyone involved. As I mentioned at a couple meetings ago, the Spring Shine Day will be held on Saturday, May 1st. Volunteers will meet at 9:30 a.m. at First Church of Sterling Heights located at 39400 Dequinda Road. And you'll be broken into a team to help clean up residential properties in need of assistance. So again, the SHINE program, which is the Sterling Heights Initiative for Neighborhood Excellence, establishes a volunteer corps, and we have two cleanup days every year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And we help seniors and others that have mobility limitations or perhaps financial hardships, and they're just not able to tend to their property like they may have been able to do so in the past. So this is a really great program. We have many volunteers, but we can always use more. So again, if you're available on May 1st at 9:30 a.m., it only takes a couple of hours. We'd love to have you at First Church, and then we'll make sure you get assigned to a team. Feel free to call our Community Relations Department for more information on the program. And also, tis the season for roadwork. I know we all are dreading it already, and myself included, but we have to get through all these projects, and one of the biggest ones that's starting up this year is Mound Road. So I wanted to take just a minute to play this highlight video, just to make sure everyone's aware of what's coming.
When you get to drive on the new Innovate Mound, you will instantly see the difference because we would have modernized and improved the signals. We will have synchronized them so that when you drive on Mound Road and you are driving at a right speed limit, you will not be stopped at every major mile intersection. And so that will help to decrease congestion, that will also help to increase safety, and that will also help with the climate change and mobility because there's not many stop and go along the roadway. What the crosshoppers, what we've done, we've done some land use study. We looked at the corridor. We looked at how it operates now. And one of the things we realized, one of the facts that the analysis revealed is that some midians, some crosshoppers where you have them now are no longer as effective as they used to be because the land use has changed on the corridor, although the corridor itself, the roadway hasn't changed. And so you have some pockets where it wasn't as safe or as efficient to be turning around on Mound Road. And so what we've done, we've looked at that, and we adjusted the location so that it falls more in sync with how they lose the land is being used on the corridor. And so that increased safety as well, and operations too. But you know what you notice also? Not only is it going to be easier and safer to drive, but you also will notice that it is a lot more pleasant looking than what you see today. As an example, the landscape, we will have a nice world out landscape concept for the entire corridor. And so we're unifying the corridor by having consistent landscape, but also like the lighting along the corridor. Right now, we have lighting in the median, in some areas, we have it on the sidewalks. Now we will have all the lighting in the median, and they will all look the same from, you know, 696 Nordley to M59. And so that also brings calmness, and that also brings a sense of community and corridor, you know, beautification to the corridor.
So we do encourage anyone who's really interested in a project to go to innovate mound.org for more information, including construction schedules and so on. This is a mega project. It's approximately $200 million. It's going to take approximately two and a half years to complete, starting this summer. But when it's done, it'll be one of the most high-tech corridors in the country, and as you saw from the video, certainly one of the more aesthetically pleasing roads in the area, along with many advancements that we've made in Sterling Heights, like Van Dyke and M59 and Dodge Park Road, and some of the other roads that have been enhanced aesthetically rather significantly. So more to come on Mound Road. I'll keep providing these updates, but if you'd like to get on the listserv to get regular weekly updates once construction begins, you can go to innovate mound.org and input your phone number for text message updates and emails. And lastly, on my report tonight, I'd like to introduce our Senior Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who's going to be talking about and introducing the team that has worked very hard to put together the North Van Dyke Avenue Master Plan. I think you'll agree from the presentation this evening that this is a really exciting project that's forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council. Great to be here tonight to talk about another corridor improvement project. At the strategic planning session, I went very briskly, gave an overview of the Van Dyke area master plan. And since we're just about to final completion, we thought the timing was really good to have our consulting firm, Design Workshop, come tonight and give a more in-depth overview of the project itself. And before I do that, I also want to recognize Chris McLeod and his leadership as part of this project as well, and putting as much time and effort and energy into working with all the stakeholders in Design Workshop to create the plan that we have. I also want to really comment, Design Workshop are doing such a wonderful job, being extremely creative, being extremely creative with community input during a pandemic. I thought they used some very innovative tools to gather public input. They're great to work with, and I know I can say this, this is one of the best master plan projects I've ever seen. I thought they've done an incredible job, and I'm really excited to introduce Chris Frieda and Manisha Cowell from Design Workshop to come and walk you through the project. So without further ado, I will stop talking because I am wasting time.
Thank you, Luke, for that extremely great introduction. Mayor, city council, on behalf of Design Workshop and our local partners, Mannix Smith Group, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to present the master plan and a new vision for North Van Dyke Avenue Corridor. My name is Manisha Call. I'm a principal at Design Workshop and the managing principal for this project. In addition to our partners at the city of Sterling Heights, Design Workshop team is led by Kurt Culbertson, our CEO, and myself, with Chris Frieda, our project manager. You'll also be hearing from Chris shortly. As part of this master plan jointly supported by the city and the Corridor Improvement Authority, we have studied seven major components, the economic and market impacts, key right-of-way reconfiguration recommendations, and have come up with a conceptual redevelopment alternatives. These alternatives have been wedded with stakeholders and the community, resulting in a preferred conceptual redevelopment plan, which is what we're presenting here today to you. A key element that is supporting the vision plan for North Van Dyke Avenue is the development of district identity and banning concepts as well. Phasing and implementation guidance has been developed to make this visionary plan a reality. The goal of all these steps via the master plan is to ensure that a future Van Dyke Avenue master plan is both visionary as well as implementable. For all of you, this is the final 240-page-plus master plan report. It is almost ready to be delivered to the city, and since we had limited time today, we will share the highlights of the vision. But rest assured, you will all be able to find all the supporting information in this The project area for the master plan highlighted here within the pink boundary includes a North Van Dyke Avenue district between M53 and 59. In the east-west direction, it is bounded by the residential community and the Clinton River along the eastern boundary, and industrial and office and residential community along the western edge. To help guide the vision of an urban environment in the 21st century that lays emphasis on a community development, environment, infrastructure, and equity, four planning frameworks were evaluated. Where are the deficiencies in the current pedestrian framework, and where can we enhance connection and add new ones? Where is it appropriate to add bike infrastructure? What is the environment in the vicinity that can attract and connect the district better to Clinton River, its huge asset in your backyards? Where are the current opportunities for vehicular framework, and how can we facilitate a more efficient vehicular infrastructure to support this new vision? There is data that suggests that road diets are essential component of success of redevelopment plans for neighborhoods and downtown districts, as they can create a walkable and bikeable district and a desirable pedestrian environment. Road diets also allow for shorter crossing distances, slower traffic, and better visibility for retail. For your project area, we studied the right-of-way from 18-and-a-half-mile road all the way north to the junction of Clinton River Road. The community and stakeholder group workshops indicated a preference for prioritizing multimodal mobility on North Van Dyke Avenue. Considering the makeup and current land use of the project area, we recommend a road diet between 19 Mile Road and Bridge Road. The negative numbers that you see on the slide in black are the seconds of delay that a driver would experience traveling through the road-dieted section of Van Dyke. The blue numbers are additional seconds of delay at peak hours in the morning and late afternoons. As you can see, there are minimal additional seconds of delay resulting from the proposed road diet. This is possible due to new roads that will provide opportunities for dispersion in the district and the rerouting of truck traffic through the 19 Mile Road to Mound Road. We studied the Van Dyke Avenue corridor in great detail and evaluated all opportunities for change that will support the community vision that I described previously. The first one of those was to review what were the opportunities for configurations within Van Dyke Avenue. The typical existing conditions along Van Dyke Avenue are shown here. There is a roughly 120 feet right-of-way with development setback. There are challenges with this right-of-way that has impacted urban design qualities of the space. Firstly, there is a vast face-to-face development distance, which does impact pedestrian comfort. A strategic impact can be achieved by reapportioning the Van Dyke Avenue right-of-way. There is a potential to shrink the vehicular reins north of 19 Mile Road to achieve more area for bike lanes and pedestrian amenities like trees, pedestrian plazas, et cetera. The change to the right-of-way that we are recommending from 19 Mile Road to Canal Road can be achieved without significantly impacting the vehicular movement and flow. We do recognize the thriving industrial office area south of 19 Mile Road, and we have proposed no changes to the number of travel lanes for this section. We are, however, recommending an enhanced pedestrian realm for this section. The recommendations on Utica Road are also the same. They include reduction of one travel lane, accommodation of bike lanes, and an enhanced pedestrian realm within amenities. I'll hand over to Chris, my colleague here, who can talk about the details of the vision plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having us this evening. Manisha walked you through some of the first recommendations having to do with the right-of-way. What I'd like to do is walk you through some of our recommendations related to the redevelopment plan. As Manisha mentioned, as part of our seven major scope items as part of this project, we conducted a market and economic analysis to understand what the market would tell us about this area and what it could yield in terms of redevelopment along the corridor. On this slide, you can see some of the highlights of our findings. Overall, we found that this area, Sterling Heights more largely, and the larger region, is really poised well to accommodate uses such as urban living, things like multifamily development, denser kind of missing middle housing, townhouse development, things of that sort. There's certainly affordability consideration, which this master plan and future investments in the area have the ability to start to make an impact on. We also identified a number of areas of retail leakage. That's dollars that are leaving Sterling Heights to be spent elsewhere. As part of the master plan vision, we're focusing a lot on retail and the overall desirability of the district as a destination for people to come, spend, and seek entertainment and enjoyment. So we put some recommendations forth about filling those retail leakage gaps. And the master plan overall prioritizes place-making, uses that are convenient, and prioritize the experience of the district. We found through our analysis, as well as taking a look at some of the recent planning work you've undertaken as a community, that industrial and office uses are really going to be considered secondary for the immediate future. So our plan conveys that. Here you can see a small plan that communicates the overall redevelopment vision that resulted from our community engagement exercises, as well as the market analysis. The numbers on the left are what you see in the plan. So this is one possible redevelopment scenario at full build-out. What we're projecting could be a 20-year-plus build-out. We've prioritized in the plan mixed-use development that takes the form of multifamily, a little bit of office, and there's a number of civic uses distributed throughout the corridor as well. On the flip side of the development conversation, we're taking a close look at the public realm, what opportunities exist to build a robust, performative, and high-quality landscape network to serve development and to serve the larger Sterling Heights community. Here you can see our landscape framework plan. What becomes immediately obvious, we hope, is that you see the degree to which we're trying to connect to the immense asset that is the Clinton River and the Greenway that encompasses it. It's a tremendously unique amenity for this area and for the city, and we're thrilled to be putting forth a vision that ties into it in a respectful way. Throughout the district, we've also established a number of parks and open spaces, and we've started to catalog the different archetypes or landscape typologies to ensure that a variety of uses can be provided here and serve a variety of needs moving forward. Everything from mini parks within dense development areas to the more natural kind of landscapes that build on what's going on with the Clinton River. One of our first pieces of analysis was to get a sense of the scale of this district. In addition to measuring it, we compared it to a number of mixed-use districts in and around the area, the larger region, and we concluded that we should take a look at the district through the lens of multiple areas coming together to create one cohesive place. So you'll see, we've broken it down into these four sub-areas and started to imagine the future of each. Building off the community workshops and online surveys that we ran throughout this process, we start to cite some of the community's preferred programming and development types, as well as open space types throughout the district, to ensure that there's compatibility between uses and that the overall vision reflects the community's desires for the future of the area. I'm going to dive in into each of the four sub-areas briefly, so you get a sense of the character of each and what's being proposed within each. The first is the district core. This is really the center of the entire district, and we see this as an opportunity to create a urban center for Sterling Heights more largely. Here we've positioned the highest density uses, including mixed-use multifamily, hotel, as well as some major civic uses. We're proposing things like potential museum, library, community center, performing arts venues. Here you see a 3D representation of that. This is just one possible scenario for how it could get built out, but the overall principles that can lead to this kind of development are recommended in detail in the plan. Here you can see a central park with developments surrounding it, providing great access to those public amenities, and a greenway that connects to the right into the Clinton River Greenway system. Utica Triangle Neighborhood, we see this as a potential future neighborhood, as something that transitions from the existing context of the residential properties north and west of the site into the district core. So here we're proposing townhouse development or some similar mid-density use, strengthening the commercial and retail profile along the eastern end of this sub-district along Van Dyke Avenue, and a number of community and public spaces. The northeasternmost sub-area, what we're calling the Parkside, this fronts right onto the Clinton River and the park system. We want to protect those natural resources in this area and celebrate the great amenity that they provide. So this is a collection of public spaces with development facing right onto Van Dyke Avenue where possible. And at the junction of these two sub-areas, the Utica Triangle and the Parkside sub-areas, we see an opportunity along Van Dyke Avenue to celebrate some of the existing developments and community uses that are there, as well as forthcoming ones, such as the Caldian Foundation's forthcoming mixed-use project, to create a cultural corridor, a place where the multiculturalism of the city can be celebrated, events can be hosted, and spill-out space can provide great additional amenities to the development that is here and forthcoming. And then finally, the industrial sub-area takes a look at how to densify and build on the success that exists in terms of Sterling Heights industrial community, and some of the great collection of businesses that continue to thrive here. In addition to densifying with future industrial and manufacturing uses of a clean type, we're suggesting potential civic uses, such as a higher education or vocational institution that can train the next generation of people who will work and make things in Sterling Heights. Among that collection of new investments, we're hoping that a new civic space can be born and provide opportunities for activation and uses that are compatible with industrial operations, like a brewery or distillery, that can bring people to the area and, again, celebrate that great work that's going on. So here you can see the overall vision. This is a 3D representation of the plan that's being proposed. You can see the residential neighborhood in the forefront, which is the northernmost part of the site. It transitions up into a higher-density mixed-use center, and then the larger form buildings in the back constituting the industrial area of the site. And of course, the river along the eastern edge of the slide creates a fantastic connection. I won't go into detail with the phasing, but you will have a chance to dig into this with the master plan report that we're issuing. But rest assured, we are providing guidance on what we think makes sense in terms of rolling out the investments in redevelopment that could take shape here. We're identifying projects such as temporary tactical urbanist strategies to showcase to the community the potential of what could happen here with the installation of road diets and new development forthcoming, and also creating a platform for future city events. In the short term, we see opportunity for densifying some of these strategic areas and making investments where we see low-hanging fruit. In the long term, building on some of the momentum that was established in the prior terms, we're able to see, hopefully, increased property values and policies from the city and other agencies in line with this vision that would allow for new development to take shape. And finally, in the long term, a transition of the streetscape in line with what my colleague Manisha outlined, and investment intensification of these industrial areas, and potentially some new community residential and retail uses on the eastern side of Van Dyke Avenue. So I'll conclude my part to say, we have taken a close So I'll conclude my part to say we have taken a close look at all of these different areas, the attributes that define the North Van Dyke Avenue corridor. And while planning for each of these individual areas, we're looking at it holistically. We see this as a unified district in the future and a place where people will come for a great variety of things to do, see, learn, and experience. With that, I'm going to hand it back to my colleague Manisha. Thank you.
As I mentioned previously, one of the elements that we studied as part of the master plan was the vision and branding for this new district. The key values that we wanted to reflect were that the new North Van Dyke District is inclusive, artful, and uplifting. We prepared two options for the community and the stakeholders to choose from, and the option that had the vote was a simple idea that is an homage to the manufacturing brilliance of Sterling Heights with its attractive natural environment. It reflects a future that is both creative and vibrant. The colors of the icon have been inspired by the site and the larger community. The colors of the brand have been adopted from the family of colors that Sterling Heights has already explored as part of your most recent branding effort. The motif and colors have been made flexible enough so that they can take a variety of forms, and as you can see it, it still has a mid-century but modern aesthetic. The typeface is simple, yet works with the overall aesthetic. We've also prepared a number of applications from the gateway markers all the way to pedestrian and wayfinding signage and even street furniture. With that, I'd like to thank you for your attention, and again, thank you all for this opportunity, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that we're doing our best to already effectuate some of these ideas outlined in the plan. We have a number, well, one particular project that's significant that we hope will be moving forward very soon here for council action, hopefully at the next city council meeting. So the plan is really exciting, and as Benjamin Franklin once said, "If you fail to plan, you are planning to fail." So we have a good plan, and we look forward to implementing it, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. I guess before we go on to the rest of your report, I'll open it up to city council. If you have any questions for Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to our presenters, both Manisha or Chris, it doesn't matter. I'm just trying to get a really good idea of the parameters of where this is going. So 18 and 1/2 mile from Van Dyke, it's 18 and 1/2 mile up to M59. And then Utica, where does it start and end? I know that certainly it's crossing Van Dyke, but where does it start on Utica Road and end past Van Dyke on Utica Road?
Question, councillor. So the study area for the master plan follows exactly the boundaries of the Corridor Improvement Authority District. So it's 240 acres in total. And let's see, what is the best plan to walk you through it? That will do. So this is flipped 90 degrees, just to your orientation, and we stop the site just before M59, actually, which is, again, in accordance with the district boundaries. And the master plan area kind of follows the edge of the river on the eastern side and subtracts the multifamily housing project that exists here. And Utica picks up right at this spot. So after this first intersection--
She can't see what you're pointing at--
I'm sorry. I'm looking at this other-- But I can see, so I'm seeing where it just starts. Just past, that's okay. It's just past what's currently a Walgreens and then, and I believe the Walgreens is planning to still stay there, correct? So that next building would be, it's an office building at this time. Okay, very good. Then to, if I could please, to follow up. So I'm just wondering, the bike path that you are talking about along Utica Road starts at the 18 and 1/2 mile and then goes north and, you know, along that area, both sides?
That's right. So we proposed a bike path along Utica. We're proposing a connection along M53 here, so it creates something of a loop. If you remember, from the section of Van Dyke Avenue starting at 18 and 1/2 mile road to 19, we've put a combined bike path outside of the roadway, which would allow linkages to Utica Road and into the park system here.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mayor Taylor.
Councillor, anyone else with any questions?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. So help me to understand something. And I understand this is a 20-year plan. We have established businesses that, in your plan, changes to residential, townhouse. How does that work? I mean, what do we do with our established businesses? We don't want to, for sure don't want to push them out. So how does that evolve? Can you explain that to me?
Sure, councillor. I would start by saying that we do recognize that, as you just mentioned, that you have a lot of successful businesses. So part of the infrastructure plan accommodates those current successful businesses while planning for new forms of land uses in the future. And what we've also done is, as part of the report, we've looked in detail for the properties that currently are either vacant or available and seen what kind of strategies we can have for assembling some of those properties together to have developments that you are seeing here. Chris, would you like to add something?
Absolutely fair question, and one we get a lot with these kinds of vision plans. What I will say is that this is ultimately a vision plan. It suggests a future and transformation of uses within the corridor. And certainly, no one is advocating for any kind of effort to push out existing businesses. However, we anticipate that if this plan does come to fruition in the way that it's outlined here, there will be opportunities to transition those uses in the long term or the short term, depending on what each respective business owner or property owner deems as their own interest. And the hope is that the community can get behind this plan, and landowners will see an opportunity to aggregate parcels in the future and take advantage of increased property values and opportunities to participate in this overall vision.
I would just never want a successful business owner in our city to feel as though we're pushing them out or forcing them to relocate, because I don't think that's what we're all about here. And the other thing I can't wrap my head around, I understand bike paths and I understand walkability. I also understand that in this proposal, you're adding approximately 1,200 residences, but you're reducing lanes. It's kind of like stuffing sausage to me. And I can't wrap my head around how that will work either, because you're increasing how much, you know, drivable traffic is going to be in that area with so many, you know, townhouses and residences. So how do you justify reducing lanes when you're increasing population by so much?
Absolutely, thank you for the question. Another one we get quite frequently with these kinds of plans. What I'll say is, what we're proposing here and what we've worked with the community to develop as a cohesive vision is a real transformation in the kind of place from what it is today. And we've looked extensively at exactly what those kinds of impacts might be in the face of the development and the transformation we're proposing here. What we've seen in a number of these places where we've worked is that if you can shift the paradigm from a place that requires you to drive to one that accommodates comfortably a wide variety of means of mobility, from biking to walking to ride-share to micro-mobility and whatever else may come in the future. We've seen reductions in the overall amount of traffic that hits the roads. So at the same time that we're proposing a road diet on just the segment that we hope becomes this kind of vibrant experiential urban district, is that there will be less need for cars. We go into lots of detail in the report in this, and we take a fairly exhaustive look at the parking and other elements that will be really important to the success of this place in the long term. And what we've concluded is that with the mix of uses that are here, it enables people to park once, once they arrive, as opposed to having to go from one location to one, maybe that's right next door, and get in your car to do it. There's the opportunity to park once, to share parking amongst a variety of different uses, to diversify the means by which you get to this place and circulate around it. And there's also an option for folks to live in this district, work in this district, and shop in this district, none of which would require you to get in your car to move about the various uses. So I'll basically just end with, we've seen success with this strategy in lots of places like this. It's one of the kind of foundational elements of urban place-making, and we're confident it could work here.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this road diet is an excellent idea. Ann Arbor, where I went to undergrad, a lot of their streets in downtown are only one lane each direction. And yet, they seem to have a large population that goes to and from work and to and from a number of activities in that downtown district without extensive traffic. I just think that people here are so used to driving their car for every minute detail, it'll be something new for them to really experience. But I look forward to this. I think this is great. I would love to meet with you folks before you finalize your plan. I think there's some questions from other people on council, too. If we could set up some meetings, because at the end of the day, we're the ones who are going to have to approve this. We have to sell it to our constituents. So I'd love to have that. I mean, I love your plan, but I want to really dig into the details, which I think is not the best use of this meeting's time at this point. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor, anyone else? Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. It's my understanding-- Through the chair, to everyone to answer me. You've already had meetings with some of the constituents in city-- I know that, I think I attended one of the virtual meetings where I had input into what I thought the vision should be here. And that's really what I see, is a vision. And I think that, just like any other project that we have in the city, any development or changes would still have to come before our commissions and our council for approval. I'm still looking for that sustainable neighborhood where you can work and where you can live and you can entertain yourself by walking. And I think that's what this vision is. I mean, it might not be everything that we want currently, and it is going to take a long time to do. I understand that it's 20 years, but for right now, it is a vision. I'm confident that you're going to keep the businesses that are successful there untouched, which means a lot to us. But I see a future here for the next generation. And I'm hopeful that it's, you know, it's change, it's progressive, and I look forward to watching it grow. So thank you.
Thank you for that comment, councillor woman.
Councillor, anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. I appreciate it, and I really enjoyed watching it and getting to see all the slides and see all the analysis that went into it. This corridor has been something that we've been really focused on, I'd say, for about 10 to 15 years. I mean, since the CIA, was it like 2008 or '06 or something? It's been a long time since this was established as a Corridor Improvement Authority District. And particularly, very recently, I had the opportunity to actually to go to Richmond, Virginia as part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Institute on City Design and meet with design experts from around the country to pitch this project and get feedback. And a lot of the same things that you presented today were presented during that. Really, it's like a crash course weekend of just city design and landscape design and lighting design. It was a fascinating weekend, it really was. And it taught me how much design components are important, that if you, you really have to design places to accomplish the goals that you're setting out to. You can't just leave it up to chance. And what we have is, we have a very big city, obviously, one of the largest cities in the state of Michigan, but we don't have any districts that are like this. There's, I can't think of anywhere in the city, or very few places where you could say you could work, recreate, shop, dine, all without using an automobile. And so to me, I mean, we're, we have to, we have to think about the way that this city is going to be, right? The way this city is going to be 25 years from now is important to start thinking about now, because we're not going to have gas stations on every corner. Hopefully, we won't. You know, as Mr. Jefferson said, I mean, that's at meetings past, there's going to be different infrastructure that we're going to need. We're not going to, we're not going to probably be using the automobile as much. I think that people nowadays are much less likely to be working in an office setting. I think people have come to realize that their quality of life is a lot higher when they're not stuck in a car for 20 or 30 minutes round trip. People, you know, are losing their minds, rightfully so, because Shana Road is closed now, and it's adding 5 to 20 minutes to their ride. And that is such a, you know, that's time you'll never get back. And you multiply it by days and weeks and months, and your whole life is spent driving around. And it's really something I think we should, we should focus on. And I'm mindful, too, that we have established patterns of, you know, life already there, neighborhoods and businesses and roadways. So I'm willing to see this through over the long term, but I think it's a tremendous plan and a foundation for something that I think could be transformational, as you guys said. So I want to thank you both and appreciate you being here. Anything else I missed, or anything else you want to say?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Anything else? Luke, all set? Okay, great. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Vanderpool.
Mayor, you'll be glad to know that is all for my report this evening.
Okay, very good. So the next item on our agenda is a presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution congratulating Metro Wire and Cable on the milestone of reaching 45 years of successful operations. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The city of Sterling Heights is blessed with hundreds of high-tech commercial and industrial businesses. Businesses locate in Sterling Heights because of a high quality of life, access to labor talent, low property taxes, and low water and sewer rates, among other positive factors. The city's large commercial and industrial tax base in turn helps keep taxes low for residents. It's a good model. Over the years, the city has shined a spotlight on many of the 3,000-plus businesses that call Sterling Heights home. This evening, we are recognizing Metro Wire and Cable, which is celebrating its 45th anniversary. Under the leadership of Donald and Devon Eza, Metro Wire and Cable has grown over the past 45 years to become one of the nation's largest multi-channel distributors of electrical, wire, cable, and electric components in the United States. Metro Wire and Cable provides warehousing, supply chain, and delivery services of wire and cable products for a broad spectrum of markets. The city of Sterling Heights is proud of Metro Wire and Cable, not only for its sustained record of business success, but because it has remained rooted in this community, providing many jobs. In fact, the economic impact alone from the jobs equates to over $1 million a year. But also, its philanthropic efforts improve the greater Sterling Heights community. With locations in Lawrenceville, Georgia, Iowa City, Baton Rouge, they chose to make their corporate headquarters and distribution center right here in Sterling Heights. It could have gone to any one of those other locations, but thankfully, they made Sterling Heights their home. With us this evening is Nate Tallman, who serves as the Metro Wire and Cable's Vice President and oversees a wide-ranging aspect of Metro's day-to-day operations. And Mr. Tallman would like to say a few words on behalf of this important milestone.
You stole all my thunder, Mark. We really appreciate the opportunity to call Sterling Heights our home. We've been in Macomb County now for close to our entire existence as a corporation, and Don or Devon could not be here this evening, but on behalf of them, I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Taylor, the entire city council, thank you to Mayor Taylor, the entire city council, and Mark your leadership. I've had an opportunity to work with many folks on the podium tonight when I was chairman of the Sterling Heights Chamber of Commerce, but we really have a great team here. Majority of our employees, we have close to 25 employees out of our Sterling Heights corporate headquarters, are all residents of the city of Sterling Heights. Great paying jobs, clean, safe manufacturing and distribution environment, and being one of the largest distributors of electrical wire and cable, we've been afforded the opportunity to work on many, many projects, not only in the city, but also in the region as well. So, we are greatly appreciative of the positive business relationship with not only the city, but the region, and appreciate the recognition here this evening. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Tallman. I am going to, we do have a suggested action tonight, so why don't you hang out right there? I'm going to come down, meet you, and we've got this. I don't know if we have, we do have a picture we're going to take, and then when we come back, we'll vote on this resolution to honor you and have some council comments. Is there somebody who would like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yennis.
Resolve to adopt the resolution recognizing and congratulating Metro Wire and Cable on the milestone of reaching 45 years of successful operation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Counsel, any discussion? Going once? Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just want to also congratulate you. We've lived in this city for almost 30 years, and I've actually had friends, family members who have worked for the company. They have always said it's a wonderful company. We really do appreciate the work that you've done in the city, and so, congratulations and thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I would just echo those. We appreciate every business that we have here in the city of Sterling Heights, and we strive to work hard to make sure that they're taken care of. We have a great relationship with our Chamber of Commerce, as I know you've been a part of, and if there's anything we can do as a city to help you out through the next 45 years, we're here to help. So, thank you very much. And without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congrats and best of, best of luck. Continued success. That, yes. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by Sunburns Property LLC for residential planned unit development on approximately 4.38 acres of land situated on the west side of Mound Road, south of Hall Road, P.P.U.D. 20-0003. We have a presentation from city planner Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Vanderpoel. As you note, Mr. Mayor, we do have a public hearing tonight. This is the second public hearing on this project. One was previously conducted at the Planning Commission. We'll get into that in one moment, but this is for the planned unit development for Legacy Heights. This is for a 10 duplex, or 10-unit duplex, or 10 duplexes, total of 20 units, I apologize. Locations are, the current addresses are 43719, 43739, and 43763, Mound Road. The current zoning of these properties is R100. The applicant is proposing a high-end rental apartment development. And when I say apartment, keep in mind, these are duplexes, so they are just simply rental units. Proposed development has a variety of one, two, and three, and even four-bedroom units that would be available for lease. There'd be a single ingress and egress to Mound Road itself, so it'd be a simple cul-de-sac route. Development has increased setbacks, extensive landscape, and attractive architecture overall. Here's a zoning map of the subject area, so we're just south of Hall Road on the west side. Again, you can see the R100 zoning classification, the several red boxes there indicate the properties that we're discussing here tonight. Across to the east on Mound is C1 property, commercial properties, as well as some additional multiple-family and office properties as well. Multiple-family is further to the north of the subject site as well. The overall master plan does talk about this area remaining single-family residential. It's, this area is a bit unique based on the lot sizes with the deep properties that are there, but the, along with the Mound Road frontage, it does provide some challenges for single-family residential to stay in this area long-term. But again, master plan does talk about up to four dwelling units per acre typically would be acceptable in this location. Kind of a Google aerial, Google image of the overall site, again, taking into account the three different properties that make up this overall project. Here's the landscape plan, our site plan, showing those 10 duplex units. Again, it's singular design cul-de-sac for the access to Mound Road itself. You can see the extensive landscape along the Mound Road frontage, as well as around the subject site itself. So, they're working between the tree preservation requirements of the city, as well as the additional landscaping being provided. You can, around the north and to the south, which is the top and bottom of the screen, there are setbacks in addition to what would normally be allowed for, like, for instance, for a single-family residential development. So, those residents are further protected. Now, when I say protected, that's a relative statement. When you see the architectural, you realize that these homes are very, very desirous in terms of their architecture. This is the proposed landscape entrance for the Legacy Heights development, so a combination of stone wall, as well as picket fence, if you will, or split rail fence, I should say. This is the concept rendering of that entrance, again, showing how this would present itself to Mound Road itself, kind of looking from the south to the northwest in terms of how you would enter development itself. This begins to show the architecture, craftsmen-style architecture. So, typically, when we talk about multiple-family, we talk about brick composition and so forth, but working with the applicants, they wanted a specific architectural scheme here. And so, the craftsmen style, if any of you follow architecture, isn't always conducive to brick. As usual, a lot of woodwork, a lot of ways of presenting the architecture in a different way. I commend the architect in this fashion. I think it's, this is something that we don't have a lot of within the city and provides a very attractive overall design. So, in terms of the P.U.D., keeping in mind, again, this was public hearing from the Planning Commission. That happened in January. They unanimously recommended approval of this project. This is the second public hearing. Again, city council ultimately has the authority to take a look at this P.U.D. and make recommend, or actually make approval or denial of it. Again, the landscaping plan, I think the applicant has gone above and beyond what our ordinance requires. We've worked with this development for a long time. I'm sure the applicant will be more than glad to tell you that, but I think it's yielded a very good development. The perimeter of site does act as a common area to the overall development, while there isn't necessarily an overall exterior sidewalk or pathway system around this. Again, keeping in mind, it's a singular cul-de-sac. There are full sidewalks within the development, to Mound Road, so that's all there. But again, the back portion of the properties or the buildings themselves act as kind of the common open space and the buffer to the surrounding areas. They are looking for a slight modification in terms of overall density. Normally, for this type of property, we'd be looking at 16 units within the R100. The applicant is requesting 20. Master Dan, or master plan does support up to four units per acre, but again, I think based on the overall style of the, of the project and the overall amenities being provided, I think that the applicant has gone above and beyond the ordinance, which allows council to approve that modification. And then, in terms of the duplex buildings themselves, these are very large footprint buildings. Again, this is a high-end rental component. The, your backup material, see, they're going anywhere from $2,500 to $4,000 in terms of their rental rate. They're kind of looking for a, an executive that gets transferred here, or someone that's here for a longer term, that doesn't want to necessarily stay in a long-term hotel, or look for housing, or if it's a transition to someone that is looking for permanent housing here. But again, it's not necessarily a transient rental unit. It's looking for someone that is, is a higher end, if you will. So, with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Does the applicant want to make any sort of presentation before we open the public hearing?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Jeff Klett with Krieger Klett Architects in Royal Oak, and I'm here with the owner and developer Brad Burns of Sunburns Properties. So, again, thank you for your time. We do have a very brief presentation, but based on Mr. McLeod's excellent and very thorough presentation, we can be a bit briefer. I'm not sure how to. Generally speaking, from a design standpoint, that's where we can add a little bit of color here. And as was mentioned, from the very onset, Brad was looking for a very high-quality luxury development, but we also wanted to compliment and respect the surrounding, single-family neighborhoods around us as well. If we could jump to the design narrative, which may be the third, third slide in, that touches on some of the points. But again, instead of looking at a much denser, larger, taller building, we look, we propose to break this up into smaller footprints, you know, footprints that are comparable to the surrounding homes around us. So, generally speaking, they either match, or they're comparable, or even less in size. And the same goes with the height. These are one-story and two-story buildings, so they, again, are either match, or they're less in height than the surrounding single-family homes. So, we feel that this is well-integrated and will, and will complement the surrounding neighborhood nicely. Other things, too, from a, from a traffic or vehicular standpoint, we only have one egress point into the site, so there'll be really no, no impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. From a parking standpoint, we have ample parking within our garages and driveways and with on the street. So, it's really just a nice development that complements. Just mentioned a green space. We propose deeper rear yard setbacks to allow for that green space. We split the buildings up, but also added nice buffers, too, for further landscape opportunities. And our landscape architect was very creative to integrate the existing landscape that's on-site with some new, new trees and plantings around the development, too. So, I mean, generally speaking, we just feel that this is a well-integrated design that complements the neighborhoods, and we can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation. What we'll do is, we'll open up the public hearing and then allow the members of the public to ask any questions or make any comments that they have, and then when we close the public hearing, we'll deliberate on it, and if the city council has any questions, we can call you back up, okay? Okay. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. City council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to approve the application by Sunburns Properties LLC for residential planned unit development on approximately 4.38 acres situated on the west side of Mound Road, south of Hall Road, P.P.U.D. 20-0003, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes, actually, I do have a couple of questions for the applicants, if I could, please. Through the chair, to the applicants. Thank you. So, I did catch that the approximate rental for each, for these units is from $2,500 to $4,000, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And, and what does the square footage for these units range from?
Anywhere from just under 18, around 1,800 square feet to 2,700 square feet.
Okay. So, and that is the duplex. Do you, when they are the larger unit, is it abutted to the smaller unit so that, or are they both two-large units? How is, how is that configured?
So, as you'll see on the screen here, if you can see it or not, basically, there is, as you approach into the site, there is the duplex, so each building has the same type of units in it. So, basically, there'll be a building with two, two bedrooms, then it'll go to three-bedroom units, and then it'll go to be four-bedroom units. But basically, it kind of tiers up, so it'll, basically, the first building is a single-story, and all double-story after that. So, there's no, like, low, high. Does that answer the question?
Okay. Yeah, actually, it does, sort of. It does. Thank you. And then, so, I just, I wanted to, one, I wanted to compliment you on proposing to preserve the existing trees, but when you say preserving the existing trees, how many are you planning? Is it just a couple? Is it most?
A lot.
I know that it is pretty, it has quite a lot of vegetation in that area, so how are we going to keep the beautiful, large trees that are already there?
We have a full tree survey and plan that we did, and based on the city's requirement for tree replacement, we actually supersede, I believe, the, the numbers and quantities. I don't have a total number right offhand, but there is actually a full spreadsheet. Every tree is tagged on-site. All the perimeter trees, we plan to leave everything that stands there and then augment any open spaces. The center core of the property has some dense trees that currently exist there today. Unfortunately, those would come down part of this development, and that's where we would, we would replace around the perimeter to try and create as much buffer to the neighboring sides, trying to keep as much buffer and privacy.
Yes, and I can see from this rendering that it does have quite a lot of buffer to the other residential properties on the perimeters, so.
This, sorry, I got you.
No, please.
The, this color rendering doesn't represent all the trees. There's actually a landscape plan that has all the little dots on it, so this was just to be a color rendering. So, there's a significant replacement program.
Very good. Well, I thank you. I, I commend you. I think this is a very nice addition to our city. I do know of some residents and maybe a new fire chief or two that had been looking for some nice condominiums in the area, and this would have been probably right up his alley, but he had to go a little bit further north. He'll be right back, though, soon. But, so I do, I do appreciate this, and so I thank you very much for bringing this to us, and I look forward to seeing how it's going to look. So, I have no further questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski and Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reading through the materials, I'm very excited for this project. I think, like Mr. McLeod said, it brings something unique to our community, high-end. I know there's some concerns by some of the residents nearby about it being rental, but if you could tell us more about your core market. It's not a transient-type person right thing. This is, this is a high-end corporate rental program. Could you tell us a little bit more about that, please?
So, basically, our model is the high-end luxury rental product. We have developments in other communities beyond Sterling Heights and neighboring communities, and we seek after the, the kind of more luxury, high-end rental product. We've gone before councils before, and they've kind of said, how can you think you're going to get that kind of rent? We go for really high-end finishes, and we look for the tenant that's looking for that luxury home that may not be able to go afford to buy a $500,000 home. As you know, housing costs are very high these days, but people still like to have nice, high-end tastes. They may not be able to get financed, or be able to, they may be new to the community or country even, and not be able to get credit to be able to buy a home of this size or this value. So, they're able to rent as they may have financial capabilities of doing that, but not getting financed. We've done research in the area and found that that's actually very common in Sterling Heights. We, we also have, there's a lot of corporate executives that stay here kind of semi-permanently for years to come, you know, Monday through Friday, and they don't want to be in a executive apartment. I know several individuals that worked literally in this neighborhood that do that today and would love to have something like this versus an apartment or condo, so it wouldn't be really transient, but it'd be more that style, or somebody looking to downsize, but kind of having a hands-off, hands-free living, not going to a senior living just yet, but having something to that same effect.
How long is your average lease? For, we're obviously leasing them, so how long is the average lease for these properties?
Typically, anywhere from 12 to 18 months, but we typically see those roll over. We had a property complete last June in Royal Oak, rents going around $4,000 a month, very similar type product, and we've actually just renewed every one of those leases with the existing tenants to go another year, so.
Wonderful. I, I'm excited about the, the style of the buildings. I think it actually blends very well into the, the existing homes there. I think it's an interesting product. Hope you might consider building a few more of them in Sterling Heights, and I'm, I'm in full support. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming that, to the petitioner, I'm assuming that these will be treated as regular rental properties. In other words, the tenant will take care, paint-to-paint inside. You have a maintenance company or something that handles the exterior, any kind of repairs or anything like that?
Yes, that is correct. So, we will, this will be a full maintenance service product, so basically, we will maintain the entire exterior, the landscape, the streets. Everything on the outside would be maintained by us and our maintenance personnel and vendors, and then the interior would be required to be taken care by the tenant from a day-to-day type things, but we essentially, in the end, would be responsible for the maintenance inside these units.
Do you think that you will ever do any leases longer than the year and a half?
We are always welcome to have longer-term leases if people aren't willing to sign longer-term leases. Traditionally, on residential product, 24 months is typically about as long as they usually go. If somebody walked in and said they wanted to sign a longer, we would probably welcome it. Given things today, we try not to go too much longer because of CDC guidelines and lease and eviction notices, so we try not to lock ourselves in too long of leases currently today in the estate that we are today. But we are always welcoming longer-term if, if we can get them.
Have you done any other projects like this?
We build infill apartment complexes and developments in Ferndale. We build infilled apartment complexes and developments in Ferndale and Royal Oak. I have another one in City of Rochester underway right now as well. This is going to be the first duplex style. Most of them are townhouse style or apartment-style row housing. This will be the first actual development with a kind of a street and duplex style, more home. We also build single-family homes, which kind of fall in line with this, and that's what this is modeled after, is kind of that single-family home slash condo project, just rented out.
Do you have any plans in the future to selling these duplexes?
There is a potential chance that we may decide, even during this development process, to actually sell them. The whole goal and intent was to build and develop them and rent them and maintain them into the long-term future. Most of, all the properties we build and develop, we rent, and the plan is to hold them indefinitely. This one, there's a chance. We've actually had several people inquire after the Planning Commission meeting, interest in purchasing a unit. At this time, we're not interested in selling them yet today, but that's something we would take into consideration as time goes forward.
But the way you're laying it out, the way you'll be constructing, you'll have the opportunity to turn them into sales at a later date if you so choose, correct?
Correct. That's why we've gone the route that we have, and the way we've designed things is all we'd have to do is a condo dock and basically divide and split the, the development up, and then we could sell them.
Anything else in regard to the design, the layout of the units that you would like to tell us to make it more attractive to the future tenant?
Basically, we, we select all high-end finishes. We do a lot of heavy trim, all high-end fixtures from plumbing, electrical, and appliances, and flooring, coverings. We typically build, these units will roughly be probably somewhere from the $400,000 to $450,000 per unit cost, so these are very high-end units. These are not, everything on the exterior is all James Hardy. There's no vinyl siding anywhere on these product. These are very much something you would find much more north of 59, but we're trying to bring something different to Sterling Heights, where we know that there's a buyer and interested parties into that, to have just, not the just brick-style homes and have something more craftsman-style. Would that might have some interest for you?
All beautiful hardwood floors and a second-floor laundry room, correct?
There will be a second-floor laundry room.
In the market.
And, well, she, I'm sorry, the laundry room is actually on the first floor. There, the master bedroom is on the first floor in all of the units. So I believe we have a floor plan here. So basically, all the units, there's a den or study on the first floor. There is a master bedroom, walk-in closet, master bathroom, as well as a separate powder room on the first floor, with all 10-foot ceilings on the first floor in all of the units, with a two-car garage, full basements in every unit, fireplace, a covered patio off the back rear. And then in the, there's anything in the two-bedroom units, there's a basement that has a taller ceiling and egress windows, that has a bedroom and a bathroom down there with an open finish space. And then when you get into the three and four bedrooms, they go up into a second story, and those are the bedrooms that are upstairs.
Well, I was impressed with the number of bathrooms, so I think you did a beautiful job laying it out. I wish you well with the project. It looks beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Kowski. Mrs. Zarko.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I don't, I have a couple of questions, but I do have some comments first, as I really think this is a great idea, and I think it's a need that we have in our community because of the different businesses that we have, where we have transient workers coming in, and I don't mean that in a bad way. It's that they're here and then they need to, they can't find something right away, so they, you know, would like to rent something and then move into a home, hopefully in Sterling Heights. But do you, I guess now my question, so in some of the other complexes that you have where they're rentals, do you find that a company might rent out a unit so that as people come in and out of town, rather than, say, in a hotel room, that they actually stay in the same place? So, I mean, I know that's another option that, that even with people working virtually now, I noticed that some, I've been in meetings where I've heard that places are, you know, businesses are giving up their office space and renting condos and, and just so that people can come in and out of those places to do their job. So I was just wondering if that was something that has ever happened in any of your other units, and if that's something you would be open to if, you know, the occasion arose?
It's something we would consider and evaluate. My only concern with that is we actually want to still evaluate each tenant as they came in. We wouldn't want to sign a lease with ABC Corporation and then let them put or bring it out to anybody, because we wouldn't want, you know, that, that doesn't allow us to decide, are they a viable person that's going to be good for that community or not? Not to segregate or anything like that of the tenants, but basically, we want to make sure that we're, we're monitoring who's coming in and out of these developments and who actually is our tenant. But it's something we'd definitely be interested in with, you know, approval of them subletting or letting the tenants in there. That's a, that's a great idea. And then just to touch on your in-and-out transient, another property we have, a gentleman moved from the other side of the state to take a job here in this area, and he stayed with us for a year and has extended his lease because they decided that the unit was so nice that they didn't really want to buy a house. They're just going to continue to rent at this time. So that's kind of when we talk about transient, hopefully not something short-term. It's, it's a couple-year run until they determine that they're going to buy a home or something in this community.
And our inventory, or for homes, is really low in this area right now, so this certainly would help people that are coming in. And I think that's really like, I just think it's a great idea. I think we have a use, you know, I think people are going to use this, and I wish you luck. And what I really like is your placement of how you, of the different number of, I think, bedrooms is you, in the units, the way you place them, you know, from the street level to the backside of the court. So I thought it was a good idea as well. So good job. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just quickly, through the chair to the petitioner, what is your timeframe for your build-out?
I started down this path about three or four years ago with Chris, and so I'm very eager to get going. We've started and completed other projects while waiting to get this one going. We hope as soon as we go through the proper approvals, which will probably take the rest of this year through engineering and all the building departments, hopefully next year we could get started on-site work, and then it's, you know, typically, a development is almost like a little subdivision, basically, you know, anywhere from, you know, one to three years is what our goal would be to complete it as fast as possible.
Okay. I have to echo the sentiments of, of my colleagues. I would like to add as well, though, that I thank you for not bringing townhouses. I love the aesthetics of, of the mission-style home, and I think it's much more appealing and with that neighborhood, it's our, one of our higher-end neighborhoods. I think it will blend in very well. So I appreciate the design not being those row houses or townhouse styles, like may fit better in a downtown Royal Oak or something like that. So I appreciate that, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not, I don't have any questions for you. I, I do think that this is a really exciting project, an interesting proposal, and a little bit different and new for us, so I appreciate you bringing it to the city of Sterling Heights, and I appreciate you, you know, feeling that there's the, having the confidence to build this product at this rent rate, knowing that it'll be profitable for you and it'll be good for our community as well. So I appreciate that, and I don't have anything further, so counsel, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck. We'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
All right. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction, and this is to consider introduction of a MAP amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezoned properties situated on the east side of Van Dyke, north of 15 Mile Road in section 27 from C-3 general business to M1 light industrial. Case number PG-20-0003. Presentation again from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod, he's been doing a lot of back and forth into that corner.
I apologize for that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, no, no worries. I was actually trying to stall for you a little bit.
Appreciate it.
So as you noted, this is a potential introduction for a conditional rezoning at 35700 Van Dyke Road, Van Dyke, I'm sorry. There we go. So this is a request to go from C-3, our general business district. For those paying attention to this, this is actually, and you recognize the address, this is the former Target site on the east side of Van Dyke, north of 15 Mile Road. The applicant is proposing this conditional rezoning to go to M1 light industrial district for the purpose of utilizing the existing vacant building, the vacant Target, for a warehouse or a distribution center. Again, the current zoning C-3. It is also overlaid by our Van Dyke mixed-use overlay district. Site's part of an overall commercial development, including the former, or the movie theater site access. There is indirect access to this. Obviously, most people here are familiar with the Target site, to Van Dyke and Broom through the mutual access drives and parking lots. There's no direct access, obviously, to the Target site from Van Dyke itself. The applicant has provided a total of eight conditions as part of their conditional rezoning. We'll go through those in just a little bit. You can see here the zoning map showing the red area through here, that's all zoned commercial in some form or fashion, most of it being C-3. Directly to the north, northeast across Broom is RM2, multiple-family residential. Further to the east from this, the single-family residential with a slight bit of multiple-family to the southeast behind the movie theater. Across Van Dyke, obviously, that's the core of our industrial district, going up and, up and down, north and south, along Van Dyke, along the stretch of Van Dyke, no industrial on the east side of the subject area. Master land use plan, this is where the Van Dyke mixed-use overlay district comes into play. The master plan that we adopted in 2017 calls for this area ultimately to become a higher-intensity mixed-use development area, which will reduce residential. We've done the, we've done the zoning ordinance overlay, which brings in that element, or the potential for that element, but does not call for warehousing or distribution to be one of those uses to be allowed within the Van Dyke mixed-use district. Just kind of a Google area showing the overall building itself relative to the surrounding area. Obviously, everyone's familiar with the front facade of the former Target. This was the site plan that was provided by the applicant. Several of the conditions or several of the elements provided by the applicant included eliminating the parking along the west side of the building, and then also providing or eliminating some of the additional parking along the west side of the parking lot as extends to the south near the Ruby Tuesdays, the former Ruby Tuesdays down there. Also providing a total of seven different parking lot islands. I apologize, my one, one bubble moved there. But then also providing patio space to the east side of the building. It did indicate that existing truck traffic would be maintained out to Broom as part of the industrial warehousing type use. One of the other conditions was that, that the applicant offered was that the building itself would be painted. Most of the materials would remain the same, with the exception of the facade, the front doors, so to speak, would be modified, but other than that, the building would remain largely unchanged. So these are the specific conditions that were offered by the applicant. Truck traffic, again, the existing truck well would be taken to Broom directly. That's the way that it's currently set up. They proposed no change of that. Removal of that west parking area to reduce unnecessary existing parking. Replacement of, removed west parking area with extensive landscape and trees area to the building character. Additional landscaping and trees added to the west property line, that's that area that extends down towards Ruby Tuesdays. Then seven planted islands that would eliminate open and traditional parking appearance to try to define some of that parking lot area. If most of you have been through there, that area is rather open. The overall landscaping has been increased, and again, these are kind of verbatim from the applicant's conditions offered. Change of building color from the existing beige to a varying shades of gray, and then finally, that the use itself, the facility would be a warehousing or distribution center. To this point, we have not had a defined user, which makes, obviously, opens up the entire M1 district, you know, in terms of what could potentially be here, although the applicant has defined a warehousing and distribution center, but keeping in mind that can mean a lot of different things. That could range all the way, that's what we call Amazon, is warehousing and distribution center. So without knowing a specific user makes ultimately the decision-making a little more difficult. So at this point, the applicant, I will make note, the applicant has requested an indefinite postponement. You also have our recommendation, which came forward from the Planning Commission Office of Planning, also makes the recommendation for denial of the application. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Jefferson.
As I spoke out at the last meeting about this, I'm not in favor of this. I believe that that area could be used for a different area than an industrial warehouse type setting. Something else could be put in there. We have a number of open spaces in this city for a distribution center or a warehouse type setting, and it's going up Van Dyke, and we just had a big deal about North Van Dyke. So, yeah, this is, this is not necessary. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on this item? If not, I will just briefly reiterate. So the petitioner, Mr. Rogeri, called me today asking for an indefinite postponement, which, can I ask, before a motion is made, Mr. Kachubsky, with an indefinite postponement, would that just make it sort of disappear until the petitioner asks to bring it back? Or what exactly?
Counsel has basically two options here. This would be the second postponement under your rules unless there's an extreme situation that warrants it. Counsel would normally have to take action. You can suspend those rules if you'd like, but that's the rule 15, or 16, excuse me. With respect to a postponement indefinitely, what that does is it does take it off the agenda. It would be postponed indefinitely, and unless there was a substantial change in circumstances, administration would likely not bring it back, and it would likely have to go back to the Planning Commission either way. A postponement at this point, if you were to deny it today, for example, that would start an appellate timeline as well. So you can end the matter through denial, or if there's a postponement to an indefinite date, it ends the matter, but it doesn't change the rights of the petitioner to try to bring it back at a later date.
If it's denied, then, so what you're saying is if it's denied, then they have to make substantial changes in order to bring it back?
Yeah.
You're saying if it's indefinitely postponed, they'd have to do the same thing anyways?
They would. It's just different rights afforded to the petitioner at that point.
Okay. Counsel, then, I would open it up and entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
Resolve to deny introduction of the MAP amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezoned properties situated on the east side of Van Dyke, north of 15 Mile Road in section 27, from C-3 general business district to M1 light industrial district, case PG-20-0003.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can understand the petitioner wanting to postpone this project, but I think at the end of the day, at least for me, this project is a no-go in any form of, of warehousing or distribution. I read the Planning, Planning Commission meeting minutes. Several residents in the neighborhood, through the turn of Mr. McLeod, they spoke out against this project, I believe, if I remember reading the minutes properly.
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct, Councilman Radke. There was, there was several residents that expressed concern, either via comments prior to the meeting or at the meeting itself.
Yeah. To me, this is just my opinion, we've, we've gone through several hoops to make the Van Dyke Business District more friendly to mixed use or multi-use or even commercial use, and here we are talking about putting a warehouse with truck traffic onto a residential street, which is Broom, and then having a movie theater bracketed on one side, have a commercial and several restaurants on the other, and if we're trying to create a mixed-use district where people are outside or walking around, I just can't see people, like, eating on the patio and watching these trucks stream in for an Amazon warehouse. It also would move industry across the street, and I can understand wanting to postpone this indefinitely, but at the same time, when it comes back, I'd vote no at the same time. So I'm just ready to prepare to move on with this and have them go back to the drawing board and bring us a project that we can work with. And I, I watched the Planning Commission meeting for this, and the idea that they just can't find a user, I think, is, is kind of silly. You know, they said, "Well, we have nine users, but it has to be a warehouse." Well, it wasn't a warehouse to begin with. I think maybe the rent is too high or something's going on over there that they don't want to substantially change their plan for this property, but as it stands today, I'm ready But as it stands today, I'm ready to vote no because I think this would be a terrible project. It would impact the residents. It would kind of put a big hole in our mixed-use district, and it's just not necessary. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mr. Yennis?
I support everything that Councilman Radke had to say. I have to say that I am leery, I'll choose my words carefully, I am leery of changing the zoning of a building that's in a commercial property to light industrial, but yet we don't have an end user. And it makes me wonder what, what someone is actually thinking. Is there, is there really a problem with finding an end user, or are they thinking something else, maybe long-term, and some other changes are coming up? It's, it's just a bad fit. It's a bad idea. I don't support it at all. And just for clarification, because the suggested action is to deny introduction, then this would be a yes vote to deny, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yennis. Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I, I struggled with this one a little bit because I think that we do want to get that property into a good use, but I, I have to agree both with the residents who commented, as well as my colleagues who have spoken, that this is, this is a very valuable piece of property. And to have it be a warehouse, right when we're trying to, as Mr. Radke said, redevelop North Van Dyke, what does this say to the residents that live in the southern part of Van Dyke or the central part of Van Dyke, that that's not where we want to have good living area and good quality of life and walkability? I think that this is just, I know that the owner of this property, and I happen to know him well, would probably be able to find some other uses for this. I, I wish, I wish this was not what was brought to us because I would like to see something different. So I will have to say that I'm voting yes to deny on this measure, just because it is not in, in the vision and the spirit. If we were putting this on Mount Road, a different story, but this is not where we're, this is not the light industrial area of our city. So I would say no. Thank you. Yes to deny.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. You know, when this property was originally turned into a PUD, the, the vision was that this was going to be a walkable community with some shops and some housing, and, and that was when the show was proposed, and that was going to be all part of this development. And then the, you know, 2008 happened and the bottom fell out of everything. I think the biggest sticking point for me is to make an M1 district that abuts residential. There's a difference of someone buying a home that is already a budding M1. It's different when you bring M1 into a neighborhood. And I don't think it's fair to any of the residents over there. Broom is a busy side street into a very large subdivision, and to put commercial, more commercial traffic on there, I think, is a really bad idea. So I'm in support of denying this introduction, and the unknown of what exactly a warehouse or distribution center is also a concern as well. But, but, you know, the vision of this whole area was something like we just discussed for North Van Dyke. And to just say, well, you know, the southern end isn't worthy of that, we're just going to put a distribution center, makes no sense to me. So I'm in full support of, of the motion on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mrs. Arkham?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm going to agree with my colleagues. First of all, I'm really disappointed that this is even being brought to us because I, I think that there are other uses for this particular parcel. And I have to say that when Target closed, this was probably one of those conversations through all of the neighborhood that said, my Target closed, my store closed. It was something that the people in that area depended on. And if we were to come in and put manufacturing there where they probably would want more retail, so that they, it was convenient for them to go to a store, I, I think would be disappointing to the residents as well. So I, I have to tell you that this is, I see that if this even happened, which it's not, from the sound of the thing, it's not going to, but it would remind me of some of the problems that we have on Merrill, that with, you have the industrial and the manufacturing there, and then you have residential even just across the street. And I know that the complaints that we get from residents that live there and how that manufacturing impacts their, you know, lives. So why would we want to make the same mistake? And, and actually, that was kind of, it was in transition and, and, you know, so some of it was in the planning there, and, but this is completely different where we actually know what can happen and go wrong and then still do it anyway. So I'm in favor of having this developed. That's not the issue. I just don't like what's being presented in front of us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arkham. Mrs. Kosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said, especially Ms. Schmidt, that industrial was not the intent when we laid out the plans for that area. I also would like to state that on a conditional rezoning, we normally know exactly what's going in there, and in this case, we have no idea. So I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. I think we got everybody, so I'll say, I'll go last and say, I would be in support of an indefinite postponement here only because I do sort of want to have the full picture before I make a final determination, and, and we don't have that yet because we haven't been told who the user here would be. So I would keep an open mind as to it, but, I, I mean, that's certainly not to say I would be in support of it down the road. I, I do think that it's important that we keep M1 on the other side of Van Dyke. It's really, this would set a bad precedent. And so unless it was a really unique user and a really isolated type use that, that was really enticing, I would, I would be voting no anyways, so I'm not going to hold this up. I'm not going to vote no. By saying I would vote no, I would vote to deny the use. So I'm not going to vote against this, even though I might prefer that it just be indefinitely postponed. But based on what our, our attorney said, it, it might not make any difference anyways. I mean, they've had some time to put, put together a user here, and the fact that they haven't been able to find one is pretty good evidence that they're not going to find, you know, a grand slam for this if it is rezoned. So it, it's really not, and I'll tell you, I've heard from other people that have said, oh, if that goes, then what about the piece next to it, and what about this other piece? And it's like, well, no, we don't, we don't want that. I mean, I know I certainly don't want east of Van Dyke to be turning into a, an industrial area. We have, we have an incredible industrial backbone for our city, and there's plenty of it, there's plenty of space over there. And frankly, I mean, maybe the, maybe the point is there's not plenty of space, and that's why he's trying to push it over here. But that just speaks to the, the low amount of vacancy we have is, is how enticing that real estate is. So I'm going to vote yes to deny this, even though I might prefer the other way, but, but I certainly am not, not in support of moving industrial to the east side of Van Dyke. So I, I like, I mean, I, I much prefer what we talked about earlier in the, in the evening, which is, you know, making it more, making, making these commercial areas more vibrant, not, not turning them into warehouses. So without any further discussion, motion is to deny. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight. What I thought, we jumped right to the community development block grant on our, on our screen, so I was like, what? But next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Mr. Jefferson?
I would like to speak on number K, to adopt a resolution condemning hate crimes and discrimination against acts against Asian-Americans. And we should have tracked out Asians and just put Americans. No reason to separate anybody from any hate crimes or discrimination acts in this here society as we've seen today. So I, I don't know why, it's just not all Americans. That's why it's a specific group that we're adopting a resolution for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, city attorney, Mr. Riscoz, nice to see you once again. I want to start by talking about letter H, asphalt resurfacing of Metro Parkway from Andrew Drive, which is Van Dyke Road to Dutch Park. Why is, you know, why from Van Dyke to Dutch Park? My question becomes, Metro Parkway is one of the most important roads in our city, and the resurfacing of Mount Road is more important, in my opinion, than Mount Road. I mean, Metro Parkway than Mount Road. Mount Road construction will take years, forever. I'll probably be married with kids, and Mount Road will still be, you know, up for resurfacing. I-75 will probably be finished by the time, even way, you know, before Mount Road is finished. So I want to draw the focus more on Metro Parkway, all of Metro Parkway, specifically not just Van Dyke to Dutch Park. You know, I wasn't going to come today till I saw the consent agenda. Then I said to myself, you know what? People need, you know, a voice. So I need to say to members of council, city manager, don't just focus on, you know, one mile or two miles of Metro Parkway. Have you seen, you know, Metro Parkway from Ri, Mount to Quinder and Ryan? I drive those roads every day. It's a disaster. It's much more worse than Van Dyke to Dutch Park. Worse, without question. It's probably the worst, you know, road in our city, roads, I can say. And I actually live in that area, the west side of Sterling Heights. You drive onto Quinder Road from 16 Mile North, that's Sterling Heights area. You're heading south, that's Troy area. You look at the north part, you look at that side of the road, compare it to Troy. Just compare it. I'm not going to say what's better or worse. Just, just see it for yourself. And I can say Sterling Heights, you know, is just, just looking at those, those two roads, it's just that comparison just draws a lot of embarrassment, as I can say, just to look at, you know. And I have nothing against, you know, Van Dyke to Dutch Park, but extend it. The intersection of 16 and, 16 and Ryan is by far the most busiest intersection and one of the most busiest in Sterling Heights. There's a lot of accidents in that area. I drive that area every time. I have family that live in that area. I grew up, when I was a kid, I mean, whenever there was an accident in that area, you would see people everywhere. Please shift focus to the western part of Sterling Heights with regards to roads, not just the eastern part. Another, another take on the road is 19 and Ryan on Felice Drive, where I live. They repaired half of the street. Great, but what about the second half of the street? It's just a disaster. Put that into consideration. I also want to speak on letter K, to adopt a resolution condemning hate crimes and discriminatory acts against Asian Americas, Americans. All due respect, I have tremendous respect for Asian-Americans, tremendous respect. I support their businesses. I support them as a people. I went to school with many Asian-Americans. I have many Asian-American friends. I am not putting them at hate. But I want to draw focus to why as, why are you guys, you know, drawing focus to Asian-Americans only with regards to condemning hate crimes and discriminatory acts? This resolution should condemn hate crimes and discriminatory acts against all ethnic communities.
Thank you, Mr. Manny. Appreciate your comments.
God bless you.
Anyone else on the consent agenda? Yes, you miss?
Hi, my name is Gina Eckle, and this is my husband, Brett Eckle, and we have a picture of our daughter, Elise. And Elise is almost 17 months old, and she does have the arthocollagia Ehlers-Danlos syndrome, so the type of EDS. And EDS, they are connective tissue disorders, and connective tissue, it helps support, hold together, and protect our body's tissues and organs. So if someone has something affecting their connective tissue, naturally, it's going to have a physical impact on their body. So in particular, there's actually 13 different types of EDS. So Elise's criteria for her type are arthocollagia EDS. It consists of bilateral hip dysplasia, so hip dislocation, and our hip joints are actually our largest weight-bearing joints in our body. So it's really important to take care of your hips and treat that. In addition, it's called hypermobility, is another criteria for her type. And hypermobility is, you know, having a large range of movement with your joints, so being too flexible, pretty much. So actually, like, her fingers, they can bend all the way back to her wrists. Her toes can come up all the way to her shins. And, you know, we never really realized, being too flexible, you really have to be careful because you could hurt yourself, and you could injure yourself and cause pain to your body. So that's interesting, something we learned. In addition, it's causing some low muscle tone called hypotonia. So all of these symptoms combined are just delaying her development physically, just achieving her milestones, you know, crawling and walking, but she's doing really great. Recently, this past week, she's made really great strides in walking by cruising along furniture and walking while pushing her walker, so we're really excited about that. And, you know, as a parent, it's difficult at first when you realize something is wrong with your child, and you don't know what it is, right? There's a lot of fear associated with this. We, in particular, are really grateful for Elise to have gotten an early diagnosis from her geneticist. And given that diagnosis, it's really just helping us to treat her. So that just consists of giving her the doctors that she needs, therapies, bracing to support those joints, make sure there aren't any further dislocations. And so with that being said, I just want to really focus the month of May on building awareness for EDS. And so we want to thank Melanie Davis and the council members for adopting the resolution to designate May 2021 as EDS and HSD Awareness Month in Sterling Heights. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else on the consent agenda? This may be out of order, counsel, but I, I do want to say, you know, some people might say, well, why do we even, why highlight EDS? Why not highlight all diseases? And it's for that particular reason, because there's a unique disease that maybe not many people know about. Highlighting it, bringing awareness to it, and focusing on it helps this family and helps other families who are dealing with that. And so I appreciate you coming up and sharing your story about this unique issue and why it's important for the city council to recognize it. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion. Actually, Mr. Vanderpoel, can you address the 16-Mile Road construction issues? Because this is a common question, and I'd like you to explain it to Mr. Manny so that he understands what exactly is going on here. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, let me begin by saying, as I think most understand, Metro Parkway is a county road. The city does not have jurisdiction over Metro Parkway. We do not determine what sections of Metro Parkway get paved when. That is solely determined by the county. We have expressed interest to the county, strong interest, in them accelerating the section of Metro Parkway for repair between Ryan and Quinder. We've made repeated requests. We're hopeful that they do accelerate it, but as it stands right now, that section is scheduled for next summer construction. Metro Parkway is obviously a, a, a big road that spans the entire width of the county, so they make programmatic improvements according to funding availability. The, the section at Quinder and Metro Parkway, that intersection is really bad. The good news there is that Oakland- The good news there is that Oakland County is already proceeding with some of the improvements that are necessary there. Those improvements will be underway, actually starting within just a matter of weeks. So we're very mindful of the improvements that are necessary in Metro Parkway. There have been many improvements on Metro Parkway, including last year, the section right around Shaner, there were significant concrete repair improvements there. Also at Van Dyke, a couple of years ago, those were completed. So the county has made progress, there'll be more progress made this construction season, and we're hopeful that maybe there's some way they can squeeze Ryan to Quinder in. It's especially bad westbound. Eastbound, the county did some work a couple of years ago, Metro Parkway between Ryan and Quinder. So, again, I would encourage residents who, who are concerned about it, including Mr. Mann, to make sure that they contact the county and express their frustration, including county commissioners. They have specific jurisdiction, and they ultimately make the decision on timing. I, I hope that proves helpful.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Now, Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Report.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, this is a consideration item, to consider approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Vanderpoel. I heard a hearing from you, a quick presentation on this year's 2021, 2022 Community Development Block Grant Proposals, as they've come forward to you. Use of the funds, keep it in mind, for their uses, utilized for housing revitalization, revitalization of neighborhoods, improved community facilities in low to moderate income persons, for, for low to moderate income persons. The total projected allocation for this year is just short of $800,000, 796,49. I want to stress that this is an approximate number at this time. Keep in mind that as Community Development Block Grant Funds, these come from HUD. So HUD does a preliminary budget and sends that out to the communities, and then they work their magic formula, and, and several months will find a final number. So the numbers that you see here tonight may be adjusted accordingly, they may go up, they may go down, no one truly knows until HUD sends out that final number. And that's been the case for every single year of the 47 years that we've done this. Funding considerations, this is done through a public hearing process, many of, how many residents will be benefit from the program itself? Has the requesting agency complied with past CDBG contract requirements? That's a big one, because CDBG and HUD will ultimately come back and audit the city and their actions, and if we find that there will be issues with contract, basically following contracts, from any one of our sub vendors, that could be issues for us as well, so we want to make sure that they comply with our kind of requirements. Did the agency attend and present a request at the public hearing? That's typically a big one as well. We have a lot of people come in last minute and say, well, can I get money, or I have a valid, or I have a, an issue, or I have something that I would like to get funded, and it's a very valid program. The problem is, if it hasn't followed the CDBG process and gone through the public hearing for that particular year, at this point, we're kind of stuck, so to speak. By all means, for the next year funding, if there is one of those programs or one of those projects, they can submit those at that particular time for next year's funding, and then would, they'd be evaluated as part of our process. And then was the requesting agency able to answer questions about their program? Obviously, when this goes through the Citizens Advisory Committee, when this first comes through, and that's part of the public hearing process, they vet these out, they vet all the projects out, and all the programs out. And so they want to make sure, obviously, that this isn't a fly-by-night, so it isn't any kind of proposal, that it was well-versed and well-presented to them at that particular time. So there's three different main, there's three main allocations of money that come through for this. Part of it's administration, that funds city staff to actually run the program and implement the program. It's a very labor-intensive program, there's lots of paperwork involved, lots of tracking of projects and so forth, and contracts, so that's one element of it. And they concentrate more on the public services and the physical projects themselves. So public services are physically capped at 15%. So even if we wanted to, we couldn't extend, we couldn't expand beyond that number. Right now, we're about 119 and, and five, 119,500 basically, based on the current projection for the budget, can be used for public services. So again, all these programs submitted their, their proposals to Citizens Advisory Commission, and then they vetted them out. Those include Turning Point, Wigs for Kids, McRest, a lot of these names seem very familiar to you, hopefully, they are year by year submitted, they bring in their proposals. This year, library Wi-Fi program, homebound book delivery program, single-parent education programs at Macomb Community College. Some of these are, are a little bit different than what you've seen in the past, but again, everyone that basically submitted and who was vetted properly and provided a valid proposal did receive some form of money this year in allocation. Capital projects is the, is the third of the equation, so again, you have administrative costs, you have public services costs, and then the rest of the money that's left after that can be utilized for capital projects. This year, again, based on current budget projections, we're just over 529,000. That includes urban drive, concrete replacement. That's typically each year we choose, or we try to do at least one roadway or one street within the city, sometimes depending on funding, that may, it may vary, may come into two, or if the, the replacement's limited, it may even go beyond that, but we should typically try to at least do one. Minor home repair, so for instance, if someone needs help, can't fund the replacement of a water heater or a roof repair or something, that's capped at a certain rate, but they can apply for the minor home repair program, seek some help in making sure that their house is suitable for living condition. Then the big one this year is senior center, roof repair, fitness room upgrades, LED lighting improvements within the senior center itself, so for, for that particular total. So when all is said and done, that totals our total allocation. So again, this is being presented to you, recommendation of approval, not only from the Citizens Advisory Committee, but also city staff, or the City Council, to consider the 2021, 2022 CDBG One-Year Action Plan as presented.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Jefferson.
I would like for Mr. McLeod to explain the, the snow shovelings and the grass cutting I heard in the past, that that was taken out, was going to the, is that coming back to us? And also, I would like to see if you guys could reduce the single-parent program to Macomb Community College. You know, I started that thing a long time ago, and it's been hijacked. Used to get like $30,000, dollars down to $10,000, but that's not it. I would like to see $10,000, $2,000 split off to the veterans of Sterling Heights, VFW Hall, we're not, because now that the state is saying that if you're over the age of 25 years old, that you can go to your local community college on the state, and I'm not beyond reason to know that people under 25 may have a little something, something going on in their life, and maybe they would like to be educated as well. So, there's no need to spend all that money now going just to the single-parent program. It can be divided, and that could take one stone off of you guys, because there's a very well-known commander that comes down here and accuses you guys of not giving money to the veterans, and this could be a way to get money to the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarko.
Resolved to approve the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee and City Administration, based on the estimated entitlement of $796,649, and authorized City Administration to complete the federal application and secure the funds.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarko?
I, I have comments. First of all, residents need to know that this is their tax dollars coming back, and how we're going to use them to make the city better. So I can understand how we divide the money up, but in, and why we do the certain percentage of the nonprofits, they get so much of the money. I believe it's 15%?
Okay.
Now, in order to receive that money, the nonprofit has to make a presentation at a meeting. I think they, do they fill out an actual application, or do they just make a presentation?
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There actually is an application, so then there's a public notice that goes out, it's run on S, on Sterling Heights TV, it's, it's in the newspaper and so forth, so there's an ample notice. That's usually run, I believe, in the month of November. December is usually that meeting where the presentations occur, and then the things get vetted out, and then it ultimately becomes for Council. But yes, they have to make their presentation and make their case for, you know, why their, why the money should be granted to their organization, and what it would ultimately be utilized for. And again, going back to one of the vetting or one of the decision-making processes, is how many people will this ultimately touch, right? And how, how much good will it do, so to speak? So, but to answer your question, yes, anyone who is interested going forward should contact the Community Development Block Grant Department, you know, within the city, to find out, number one, if they can qualify in general, and then, number two, making sure that they have their timeline situated for when those public hearings are going to be coming up for next year's potential.
Okay, and, and if you didn't, yeah, if you didn't apply, you didn't fill out the application, it's not something that we can go around and juggle and say, oh, we like this place, so we'll just give them some money because we can take from one place and put it in another? That's not how this works, correct?
That's correct. If, if someone did not submit an application and go through that vetting process, this point in the process, you cannot go back and say, that's a valid program, and that needs to be funded with this year's allocation. Again, by all means, you can encourage them to submit for next year, and, you know, the Citizens Advisory Committee would be more than glad to consider that application and ultimately, again, make recommendations to this Council. But unfortunately, at this point, the whole public hearing process would have to restart, so to speak, for that to occur, and there's deadlines and deadlines that then be, you know, in, in January.
Okay, and looking at your chart, there's nothing there that I, I want to change. I'm just telling you that ahead of time, but I would like to remind the Drug Free Coalition that maybe next year they apply for some of this CDBG money that we might be able to give them? Nothing further.
Anyone else, Council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, could you maybe answer Mr. Jefferson's question regarding the Macomb County grass and snow removal? Do you have an answer for that?
Well, in terms of the, the program itself, I mean, that's a program that's kind of been longstanding within the city, and, you know, it, it has come under jeopardy in terms of funding, you know, we've been trying to figure out ways to, to fund it, supplement it, and so forth. And it's a program, I want to say, if the number is 150 different properties, if memory serves, are touched by that program. And again, those are very lowing residents that, you know, basically rely on that service. So when it was originally potentially going to be dismantled, there was a lot of concern, not only from the city, but also those residents, obviously. So the idea was, is try to make sure that we, we secure that for as long as we possibly can.
So I'm sorry, it's 150 homes in Sterling Heights that benefit from that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Reiki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, the public services part of the, the allocation, we can use it on several different things. Lately, we've been using it for road repair and senior services, but I'm going to vote on this today because I, I appreciate the work, the hard work that the Community Advisory Group does. But in the future, I'd ask us to maybe think outside the box a little bit. I mean, we have dedicated millage to help fix our roads, and I know that In Arbor uses this for sidewalk repair, sidewalk expansion, park expansion, street trees and, and reforestation. I mean, I appreciate that we've always done it a certain way, but I'm wondering, since we have dedicated millage just for road repair, maybe we should think outside the box and really improve the experience of everyone in those neighborhoods that maybe don't use a car, including the youngest residents in our community. Because I think a new park, or maybe a Southern Recreation Center, Mr. Vanderpoel, would be wonderful for those residents to use, especially in those neighborhoods like mine that, that this money is able to be used in, including street trees and maybe sidewalk repairs or sidewalk expansion. Let's, let's really take our thinking cap on and think about how we can use this money most effectively to help everyone, not just those residents blessed to own a vehicle. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reiki. Council, anyone else? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That completes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson.
Labradini, we got a public enemy tonight. Here's a brother, scared about the community way before it was fashionable. Mr. Schmidt, you almost came around to it earlier today, didn't quite get there with the North Van Dyke project. How much is it going to cost the residents to refurbish some of the, the places that are already established? Is there going to be a loan process, or are those people going to have to come out of their own pockets? Two to three times a week, there will be an accident on the Van Dyke Expressway, and people do shoot down that way. They just don't stop. They keep going further north, cutting the lanes down, I don't see how that's going to help. Mr. Vanderpoel, Mound Road, are you guys in negotiations with Smart to get a Smart bus going up Mound? Because if we're going to put in industrial area and fix Mound up, there needs to be some kind of bus transportation going up that way. Same way with that Van Dyke, I, that bus bag up traffic as it is already, so I don't see how making it smaller is going to help. Also, on 19 Mile Road, Mr. Vanderpoel, the last time it rained hard, there was these large puddles that formed. I don't know if you got looked into it or not, that means, means something that needs to be looked into. Now, again, I'm apologizing to residents for Mike Grackey's online tirade towards them. He called me, said that I support racism, or racist, white supremacists. That is further from the truth than possibly, possibly could ever be, be brought up. The racism that I've lived through in this community over these 55 years, and to be called a racist by a guy that I have to pay, he doesn't even, began to even know the racism that I've been through in this community. When people were writing my yearbook, you're the best eighth spookoon in this class, and then turn around and call me a racist, that's beyond, that's beyond that. I know, Mayor Taylor, it's on the internet, we ain't supposed to talk about it, but no, we talking about it, because you in this too, because the people he said that I support the call that are racist, you ran with them. You took money from the white supremacists. I didn't. So, that's just, that's something... So that's just, that's, something needs to be done, and the rest of you got to do it. We tired of this. There's no, if people want proof, call me. I'll give it to you. It's not fair. Man, I took my good name from when they used to call me, there goes that nigga Jefferson, to there's Mr. Jefferson in this community, only to have somebody sit up there and say, I back racism, like I'm at the Ku Klux Klan across Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
No. Okay, you got to do something about this, man. That's not fair.
You've said your piece, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Manning.
I just want to say, Mr. Vanderpoel, is there something, hopefully by this spring and summer, some kind of proposal where, you know, the ponds on 18 and 19 Mile between Mound and Dequinder will be, you know, somewhat cleaned this year? The little rivers, streams, ponds? I live in those areas, there's a lot of, you know, dirt, trash. Just needs to be cleaned up. Not going to describe what needs to be done. It just, it just needs total cleanup. I just like a clean city, just like Mr. Yanez likes a clean city. We like a clean home. We got to keep, you know, everything clean. I just want to ask, you know, Mr. Yanez, is there something that we can do, especially with me, you know, I can help you with it, something for the western part of Sterling Heights, cleaning like the parks, you know, areas that need to be cleaned up, trash, all that kind of stuff, leaves of some sort? I'm in great support of it, and I can find a great amount of people in our community that can help clean up and make the western part of Sterling Heights beautiful, just like how all of Sterling Heights is beautiful. Because we have great people in our city who take care of everything that we need to do. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Now I'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything to follow up on?
Mayor, just a couple of things first. I wanted to further elaborate on a comment earlier. I think it was Mr. Manning who said, we have not had many road improvements on the west side of the city. And I just wanted to highlight the many road projects that have been implemented on the west side of the city of recent. And that includes 18 Mile Road just last year from Mound over to Ryan. In addition, 19 Mile Road from Ryan to Dequinder will be resurfaced this summer. 14 Mile Road from Ryan to Dequinder was redone recently, a couple of years ago. Likewise, 15 Mile Road from Mound to Ryan was completed recently, and the stretch further west of there was also completed not that long ago. Fox Hill was also resurfaced just a few years ago. In addition, we've spent a lot of time and effort in the Pondview area over the last year or so. A couple of years ago, we did some significant work on that intersection in Pondview itself, not to mention some of the residential roads in that particular area. I think most know that Dequinder has been vastly improved as well. We had a local share in that project as well. So there have been many projects on the west side, many more that are still programmed, so I certainly wanted to take some time to highlight that. With respect to the retention ponds, I think they do need some attention. We'll make sure we get with the Macomb County Public Works Office in some of those cases to make sure that there's some of the debris removed. They've been doing more of that recently, and we'll make sure we do what we can on our part to get those ponds cleaned up as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kosciowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further tonight.
Okay. I'll open it up to City Council. Any reports, new business tonight? Mrs. Saroski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'll start first. So I do want to make a couple of comments of things that I did notice, but also start the ball rolling again, just because it hasn't ended. Immunizations are still going on in Sterling Heights. Please, please, please. It's so smooth at Sears. I've worked two weekends now giving shots over there. It moves very quickly. Please, if you have not received your vaccination, call the county, get yourself on that list. They'll get you in, especially on a Saturday. It works very quickly. It's not nearly as congested as you might think. It goes very rapidly, and they save that second dose for you. It is right now a Moderna dose. It will be moving to Pfizer shortly, and we are still, as you've probably heard, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is on hold, so we will not be distributing that at this time. So that's what's going on. I just want to reiterate to please, if you haven't had a chance to get that immunization, I gave my 20-year-old his first shot. I always give him flu shots anyway, so he's used to that, but he got his first one. The rest of my family has been immunized. I really would encourage you. I just had two employees, young men, go down, be diagnosed with COVID. Did not get it from patients, they got it from exposing themselves to their families. This is something that's very, very real and very scary, and it doesn't discriminate against age like we thought it might. It does not. So please. And then to get off of my soapbox just really quickly, I did want to mention to Mr. Manning that there is also, if you're, I know that you're asking more about the retention ponds, but also the small waterways and streams. The Clinton River Watershed Council, and I can give you their phone number, they are dedicated to keeping the Clinton River clear. It is not specifically a Macomb County council. It is based in Rochester, but I do have a friend from the Macomb County Parks and Works Direct Department that does work with the council in helping to keep waterways clear. Her name is Claudette. Mr. Yanez knows her, and she is very helpful with that. And then, of course, like everything else for residents, I love to kayak the, I love to kayak the Clinton River. Whenever I'm out there, I'm grabbing whatever debris I can. If there's a bag, if there's a floating water bottle, when you see it, grab it. That's the best, best way. Many of you will remember, if you're old enough, the Keep America Beautiful slogans that we used to have on the TV. The Native American who was crying, that still to this day, I will never forget that ad, and I was a young child at that point. It did instill in me the desire to keep this world beautiful, and so it is, but it's all responsible for us. It's our responsibility. So please, there's my soapbox. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Mr. Redkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have to second what Mrs. Saroski just said. I've been down the Clinton River with her, which was a lot of fun. We had a good trip, and we really are trying to keep it clean and nice, and it's a wonderful amenity. You know, when I was a kid growing up in Sterling Heights, I never went down the river one time. And now I think I've kayaked it three or four times last year and a couple of times the year before that, and it really is a jewel, and I think that a lot more people need to get out there and use it. Just briefly, I want to talk about Senate Bill 287, which is on our consent agenda, just briefly. Essentially, we adopted a resolution today to ask that it go down because that bill is a two-sentence bill, and all it does is ban the city from providing absentee ballot postage to residents. You know, this is one of the most popular programs I think we've done in a while. It was very popular last year. We had record turnout in Sterling Heights, and all this bill's job is to do is to prevent people from voting, make voting harder, make it more inaccessible. So I appreciate my colleagues voting for that. I think that the voting bill package that is being presented by the state GOP is purposeful to stop people from voting. I'm glad that I've personally contacted both Nate Shan and Diana Farrington, our state reps, and Michael McDonald, our state senator, and asked them to vote against these bills. I'd urge our residents to do the same. It not only strips us of local control, which is a problem for me, it also is going to make it harder to vote. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redkey. Mrs. Kosci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With no objection from my colleagues, I would like to request administration to prepare a motion for our budget meeting next Tuesday to increase the, I believe it's called, the striker lifts from 2:00 to 7:00 for the ambulances to prevent injuries, back injuries, to our firefighter paramedics as they're putting people into the ambulances. And I would like that for our meeting next Tuesday for council's consideration.
Any objection? Hearing no objection, I think we have clear direction to prepare the amendment for the next budget hearing coming up a week from today.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Kosci?
No, that's it.
Mrs. Zarco.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Taylor.
I'm going to get back on the vaccination soapbox because, as Mrs. Saroski said that she's been at Lakeside, I've been at the senior center. This is something that all of us believe in, and it's the way to get back to what we want as normal again. You know what? It's always that people want what they can't have, and right now, I'm talking to young kids that aren't eligible for the vaccine, who play sports, that have even thought about offering to go into trials, the vaccination trials, because they want to play sports, they want to be with their friends, and they want to be safe. So you have an opportunity to get a vaccine and keep yourself safe and the people around you safe, and so that it doesn't affect you. You don't know when it's going to happen. Right now, one of our firefighters' sisters is 37 years old and, you know, on life support. This is, and she just delivered a baby. So these are things that you think about. It doesn't happen to somebody else. It can happen to you. So for, right now, you have to call the county to get an appointment, but you have to do it. I just don't see the reason not to. This makes us all healthier and safer, and we certainly want to get out and enjoy our great city, the parks that we have, the entertainment that we provide, and this is the only way that it's going to happen, is we have to bring these numbers down for the cases of COVID that we have in the county, and this is what we have to do. So please, please consider getting a vaccination. The other thing would be, some of the Senate and House bills that are on the floor for election reform, and I hope as some of these come up that we adopt other resolutions, whether they be to oppose them or to support them. I serve on a subcommittee for the Michigan Municipal League Board of Trustees where they asked, you can choose different topics of interest, and mine was, after the last election, was elections because I thought we had a very successful one here in the city. And in talking to Mrs. Riska today with our numbers, we talked about drop boxes today in the meeting, and how that some of these bills were proposing that we don't have as many drop boxes, they had to be closed at a certain time, that was very restrictive. And in talking to her today, we had 87% of our absentee ballots went into a drop box. So when we talk about postage, you know, at one point, I thought it was going to be a lot of money, that we were going to be paying out for these returned ballots, and we really aren't. It's a minimal amount of money, and the residents of the community have proved to us that they want to use these drop boxes. The other thing that was brought up was that you had to have, if you had a drop box, you had to have some kind of surveillance so that it couldn't be tampered with. Well, we already had the answer to that problem because all of ours were in a secure location, whether it be at the fire department, the police department, or the election center. So some of these concerns that were bringing, that were being brought up in these bills, we had already handled. So just pay attention because I don't think today's going to be the only resolution that we're going to be voting on. So just, those are what I'm working on right now. I want you to know, I'm trying to make sure that we have safe elections as well, and certainly we want everybody to get out and vote. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up the hazardous waste drop-off event that we had last Saturday. I would love to acknowledge and thank the members of the DPW and the Police Department for handling such a huge turnout, and also thank the residents for caring enough about our environment to bring all these hazardous waste forward. I know there was, at some point, a two-hour wait to get through the line, although I heard it was extremely organized and moved quickly. It was just the volume of cars that showed up. So, and I know part of that is because last year we were unable to do it because of COVID, but I'm hoping we can consider maybe doing that twice a year since our residents are so cognizant of not disposing of hazardous materials inappropriately. But once again, thanks to DPW and the Police Department for handling the large, 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 large volume of traffic and items dropped off. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone, Mr. Yanez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, I know it was brought up about the resolution night about the Asian-American hate crimes and why does it have to be Asian-Americans and not just Americans, and I get the sentiment. I honestly do. That community, the Asian-Pacific Islanders, asked us specifically to present the resolution. I fully support that resolution because unfortunately, that community is being attacked for being Asian, not for being American, and it's not just the Asian-Americans. There's a lot of individual groups who are proud to be Americans, but for whatever reason, get attacked, and I have absolutely no problem with the city recognizing resolutions to stop the hate crimes and attacks on specific groups of Americans. I do appreciate, well, before I go there, I'm very happy that Mr. Redkey brought up Senate Bill 287 through the, I was just trying to find it here, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Do we know the bill's sponsor?
Mr. Vanderpoel. Ms. Riska, do you know?
Do you have it?
Yeah. It's in your backup.
I got it. I got it. I got it. So I see that the bill's sponsor is Mr. Stamos, Senator Stamos, from the Midland area, renowned pizza chef. And interestingly enough, it was Mr. Stamos who stopped Ann Arbor from banning plastic bags. You know, this is just the heavy-handedness of Lansing coming down on local governments and telling them what to do. I think we know what's best for our community. And if our community, if the taxpayers want to pay through their taxes postage on their ballots, then we should do that. We shouldn't have somebody who lives in Midland, who's a part-time, well, full-time legislator, but term-limiting legislator, making laws, telling people in Sterling Heights what they can and what they can't do. That's what we have citizens for. They'll make those decisions for us, and we'll implement them. So I, you know, I have a bit of an attitude about Lansing, you know, because my experience there, it's a bit, you know, it can be a bit of a wasteland, and writing your representative sometimes, I, it frustrates me, but I'm glad you did it, and I'm going to do it too. And thank you very much for doing that, and I suggest that everybody, right there, representatives and senator, in regards to not only this bill, but take a look at the entire package of voting bills, which I think our state senator has one of them. I do, and I do want to talk real quick about the cleanups. I'm glad Mr. Manning brought it up. I actually had, I had two great programs I was going to implement last year, and then, you know, the excuse, the excuse that we all have, COVID, right? And one of those, one of those programs was going to be a regular cleanup around the city. I wasn't quite sure if I was going to do it weekly or monthly or what have you, and of course, time of year really makes a difference, too. Springtime is when you really start seeing the trash build up, but as the weather warms up and the grass starts to grow and the mowers come out, a lot of that tends to get chewed up. The trash is still there, it's just in much smaller pieces. But the fact of the matter is, trash does build up. We don't, I personally don't like it, the way it makes our city look. I think our expressways throughout the metropolitan area are some of the most horrible-looking expressways I've ever seen. But, you know, focusing back on Sterling Heights, I think there's a lot we can do with citizens and volunteers. I would encourage anyone out there, if they have an area in their neighborhood, to get ahold of me. My email address is on the city website, and I would be more than happy to organize a cleanup in any area of the city. And I appreciate Mrs. Saroski bringing up the fact that Clinton River Watershed Council does weekly cleanups. As a matter of fact, they have a weekly cleanup tomorrow from 10:00 to noon at Heritage Park, so if anybody has any free time and they want to, I know that's in Utica and not Sterling Heights, but the fact of the matter is, Clinton River goes through many communities, and trash that might be in Utica today could be in trash that might be in Utica today could be in Sterling Heights tomorrow. So, and that would just be, also just being a good neighbor. I'm going to try to make it if I can fit it in my schedule. But I do anticipate a cleanup program emanating from myself personally, and I hope that I can convince people in the neighborhoods of Sterling Heights to reach out to me, let me know what areas need to be cleaned up, and then volunteer to help make those, clean up those areas. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Couple things I want to highlight tonight. The first is that item on our consent agenda, a couple items on our consent agenda tonight. I mean, we talked about recognizing Armenian genocide. We talked about Asian hate. You know, Mr. Yenas, you said, I understand the sentiment that was expressed tonight. Frankly, I don't. I don't understand the sentiment. When you come up and you speak against an agenda item meant to highlight, meant to bring attention to, a terrible scourge that is affecting the lives of millions of Americans, I can't help but think that you have a problem with that group of Americans. Okay? That's how I take it. That's my personal feeling. And I speak only for myself on this. But if we were, when we come up, and I didn't hear anybody come up and say about the Armenian genocide, well, what about this genocide? Or what about this terrible thing? When this lovely couple came up and held up the picture of their daughter and the disorder that affects their daughter to bring attention to that, why didn't anyone come up and say, why are we highlighting that disorder? What about these other disorders? Can't we just, can't we just bring attention to all Americans of all abilities or disabilities? It's ridiculous. Okay? It's ridiculous. Mr. Jefferson, if you believe that I've accepted campaign contributions from white supremacists, then I encourage you to tell me who they are, and I'll gladly donate those contributions to organizations that have the mission of working against white supremacy. I'm not aware of any white supremacist having donated to any of my campaigns, but like I said, I wouldn't accept it if I knew, and I suspect that you're doing to me the exact same thing you accused Redkey of doing to you. On the topic of election reform, my question to you, Ms. Riska, you are, I would say, an expert on elections. If for no other reason, you were engrossed in that election day and night, nearly 24 hours a day. If anybody knows how elections work and how elections run and what it's needed to run an effective election, it would be you, and it would be your counterparts. Do you know if the Republican leadership in Lansing, and I only bring them up because they are the ones, I think as Mr. Yenas would admit, if you're not in the controlling party, then you don't really have much say in what bill gets brought to the table. Have they reached out to either you personally or to county clerks or city clerks associations? Are they working with you or other clerks to create these bills that are being proposed?
Yeah, so as you know, I sit on the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. I also sit on the Legislative Committee for that organization. We work with our lobbyists to discuss, you know, bills that are coming up that affect elections, affect clerks in general. Yes, our members of our association have reached out to legislators. We've had those discussions. There have been meetings. Our members of our organization do go to Lansing, and we do testify. And when they do hold their hearings, you know, in their subcommittees and whatnot, so we have an open dialogue with legislators. We are currently working, we had one meeting, and we have another one tomorrow morning to discuss the bills in their entirety and whether or not MAMC are going to support or oppose, much like the MML did that Mrs. Zierko went to. So we do have that open dialogue. They are, you know, some of them we, we are just adamantly opposed to for various reasons, and we outline those reasons. But, you know, we do have a voice, and so at least, you know, there is some input from our aspect.
Well, that's pretty, how do you say it? Diplomatic, okay? Do you get the sense, do you get the sense that they're going to take what the city and county clerks are saying needs to be done and incorporate that into any bill? I mean, like, you and I have talked personally about what needs to be done, and I think we made great, great progress. But this idea that we're treating absentee votes as early votes creates a lot of chaos on election night. Would you agree?
It's kind of a, it's an interesting question because the definitions of early voting versus absentee voting and how people view them is kind of misconstrued sometimes. So it's a difficult question to ask or to answer. You know, our hope, and clerks that I've talked to across the state, our hope is that we're able to implement early voting, retain absentee voting, implement early voting. I know there is a bill that's proposing it. We don't quite think it's going far enough. But we want to retain absentee voting, implement early voting, but also give us some pre-processing prior to Election Day with absentee votes.
Well, I would just hope that our state legislators listen to the people who are experts on this and know what they're doing, and implement the changes that need to be made to make that process smoother. And, you know, what do you know? You only run elections. So, you know, on that, on that point, I want to make one final point. I've been enthusiastic about our Vaccination Center. I've been careful, however, to not, to not use this soapbox to tell you to go get vaccinated. And the reason why is because, why the hell would you go get vaccinated because I say so? And I think there's a large swath of the population that will not get vaccinated just because their public officials are telling them to, which to me is, doesn't make a lot of sense. But I understand the mentality is that people are fearful of their government. They don't trust their government. And if the government's telling them to go do something, they run the opposite way. I get that. So don't go get vaccinated because I say it or these council members say it. For, you know, for, the reality of the situation is, I don't know what's in that vaccine. I don't know what it is made out of. I don't know how it was developed. I don't know how it was produced. I don't know what the side effects are. I don't know what the long-term effects are. I don't know any of that. But what I do know is that every single person, almost to a person who does know the answer to those questions, is recommending that you get the vaccine. Like, all of the experts. Can you find a doctor on Facebook who says, "Don't get it"? Yeah, you can. You can, right? And you can also find somebody that thinks aliens are at Area 51 and that the Earth is flat, right? You can find all sorts of kooky things on Facebook if you're on there for long enough or if you're on there for two seconds. So believe what the experts are saying. That's, I think we don't, you don't need to trust your mayor or your city council or your governor or your state representative. But for goodness sake, trust your doctor. You know, trust the health professionals, trust the scientists that are lined up en masse saying that this vaccine works, it's safe, it's reliable. And just trust the numbers. If you don't trust me, trust basic math. Trust basic math. Millions and millions of people have contracted the virus, and millions have died worldwide. You know? Millions and millions of people have gotten the vaccine, and a couple hundred have gotten COVID-19 after having the vaccine. So weigh the two. Just trust the experts that are out there. Please. Because to everyone who wants our economy to come back, who wants our schools to come back, who wants normal life to come back, if we have 40% or 50% of the population that won't get the vaccine, folks, the same people who hate the shutdowns and hate the restrictions and hate, you know, tyrannical government forcing you to do something are going to be the ones that are going to be getting sick and continuing to cause the shutdowns and lockdowns and restrictions. So I just implore you, don't listen to me. You know, I have certain things I think I know about. Vaccines aren't one of them. But I trust the experts who are all lined up. 99.9999% of every scientist, doctor, and nurse in the world is telling you these vaccines are safe, they're reliable, and they're going to protect you and your family. And they're going to protect people out there who can't get the vaccine. They're going to protect people who are in the hospitals, helping. So listen to the experts. Don't listen to me. I'm just some dope who sits at a city council meeting. Okay? Listen to the experts. Like Mrs. Saroski. With that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Yenas.
Thank you for your passionate speech about the vaccinations. I just want to be clear.
I shouldn't have picked on you.
No, no, no. I'm a big boy. I got thick skin. I just want to say, I understand the line of thought. I don't agree with it.
I understand.
But I understand it. Thank you very much.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I shouldn't have picked on you.
You're fine.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
I do want to tell you, as you singled out Mrs. Riska today, that the efforts of our election and the way we set it up and the results are actually being used in lobbying movements in Lansing as a positive force to copy us. That's all I have to say.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I thank you too, Mrs. Zarco, for your leadership on this. You sit on an important board with the MML, a subcommittee. You're a trustee with the MML and sitting on that board and making those recommendations that are going to hopefully be used to implement policy. Because, you know, what do we know? It's only our city, and it's only the things that we run every day. So, all right. Thank you all for coming out to participate. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Support's been moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you again.